Good afternoon. I'm Steve Parsons, President of Third Mutual Board here at Laguna Woods Village. This is a call to order for Third Mutual's Town Hall. Vote now. Welcome to you all. In addition to you here with us online, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of the press. We are being broadcast live on TV 6 and streaming via Granicus. Thank you all for joining us. Please welcome Annie McCary, our First Vice President of Third Mutual, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Director McCary.
Thank you, President Parsons. If you would, first of all, silence your phones if you're on with us. Please stand and place your hand over your heart as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Returning for an encore as Third Mutual's Town Hall Moderator is Mr. David Dearing. Many of you know David from his roles in the old Prose Troop and as a member of the village's first and only electronic rock band, The Village Midians. David is a former English teacher, so we won't be accepting any insubordinate clauses today. Take it away, David.
I'm not sure I know what an insubordinate clause is, okay? Just a three-second grammar lesson. There are dependent clauses, independent clauses, essential clauses, and non-essential clauses. And I would like you all to vote yes because it is essential and we are dependent on your vote. Vote yes to end this mess. Thank you. Sorry for the commercial message. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm David Dearing, your moderator and fellow neighbor in Third Mutual. On behalf of Third Mutual, welcome to the second in our series of virtual town halls, focusing on the impending and all-affecting vote yes ballot proposition. Secret mail-in ballots were mailed to each Third Mutual eligible voter as of October 2nd. You should have received your ballot in the mail by now. We urge you to vote yes as soon as possible. We are honored to have three officers of our Third Mutual Board seated on our panel today to share information and to answer any questions that you may have because they are indeed the experts on this issue. They have been working ceaselessly to represent us and our best interests as Third Mutual owners, having initiated this ballot proposition to help us save us from runaway costs and assessments. Please raise your hand as I recognize you. Director Steve Parsons, President, who called us order. Thank you, Steve. Director Annie McCary, First Vice President, and who led us in the pledge. Thank you, Annie. And Director Robert Mutschnick, Treasurer. Thank you, Robert. Also attending today online, our Third Mutual Attorney, Sandra Gottlieb. Sandra, from the firm of Swetelson Gottlieb, thank you for being available to answer questions regarding the legal points of the ballot proposition. And joining us today via go-to meeting, we have some special guests. Director Lynn Jarrett, Secretary for Third Mutual. Thank you, Lynn. From our Asian-American community, we welcome Mr. Young Park, representing the Korean-American Club here in the village. And Dr. C.C. Lee, Board Member for the Laguna Woods Village Foundation and the Chinese-American Club. Thank you for your representation here today. Also joining us are Willie Phillips of the African-American Heritage Club. Thank you, sir, for being here. And William Walsh. Many of you know Bill. He's the former First Vice President and Board Member of Third Mutual. And finally, but not the least, Ms. Janet L.S. Powers Esquire, distinguished HOA attorney and Third Mutual resident from the law firm of Fiori, Rakibbs, and Powers. Janet is also a member of the Community Association Institute, CAI. We are eager to hear what she has to say about the ballot proposition, through her eyes and the multiple levels of expertise and experience. We are gathered for this Town Hall to discuss the vote yes ballot proposition. By now, all eligible voters should have received your secret mail-in ballot. Yes, that is officially what your ballot is called. The secret mail-in ballots were mailed to you on October 2nd. If you are a manor owner who uses a mailing address outside of Laguna Woods Village, your ballot may take longer to reach you. The secret mail-in ballot can easily be mistaken for campaign materials in the barrage of mailers most of us are receiving for the national election. The secret mail-in ballot is mailed to you in a humble white envelope. Your ballot vote is inside the white envelope. Please vote yes now. Thank you. If you received your mail in the village and have not received your secret mail-in ballot, or you cannot find it by Wednesday, please call 855-240-0363. That is the number for the Inspector of Elections Duplicate Ballot Request Call Center. Tell the operator that you are a Third Laguna Woods, Laguna Hills Mutual member. Provide your name, address, and phone number, and a replacement ballot will be mailed to you in the next one or two business days. That number again, if you lose, damage, or never receive your ballot, is 855-240-0363. And that number is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Because every vote counts, and frankly, we need a huge turnout in order to pass this proposition, please vote now. Without a clear voter mandate of 66.67% yes votes, the Board will not have a choice but to raise assessments astronomically just to cover insurance costs. And you'll hear more about that forthcoming. Now, that's the bottom line that I got from listening to last week's Town Hall. So, Third Mutual urges you to vote yes now. By the way, in a recent village election, 550 votes were thrown out because ballots were not filled out and returned according to instructions included in the ballot. It is very important not just to cast your ballot, but to fill it out correctly and return it by the deadlines. Here are some helpful guidelines on how to make your vote count. So, with the assistance of Mr. Grant Schultz from VMS, please roll the video. See you soon. While we're waiting for the video to roll, you will be able to answer or ask any questions that will be answered few from the Board members. And if you do not receive an answer today on our telecast, they will be more than willing to answer your questions by way of email at a future point. We also have a demonstration of how to fill out the ballot. Not that most of you need it, okay? But as a schoolteacher, I love to cover all my bases. So, are we ready to roll? Thank you.
As a friendly reminder, cast your Third Mutual ballot by using a dark pen to fill in the oval. Place your ballot in the secret ballot envelope, then insert into the yellow postage-paid return envelope and seal. On the back of the yellow envelope, sign your name. Mail in plenty of time to arrive before November 2nd, or hand-deliver to the Community Center ballot box by November 2nd. This is an important election proposition. Please vote.
You will hear that more than once today, no doubt. But we want to make sure that you can do it correctly and that every vote counts. Please. Remember to return your ballot by mail as soon as possible, or you can choose to place your ballot in the secret mail-in ballot in the ballot box near the entrance to the Community Center by November 2nd, and your vote will be counted. Before I flip this over to Director Steve Parsons, I'd like to bring a few housekeeping notes to your attention. We will be doing a Q&amp;A session today for most of our dedicated time. People watching us on TV 6, streaming through Granicus, you can connect with us by texting or calling this number, 949-354-4199. Please identify yourself by name and manor number when you text or call. Okay. Now, a word from our Board President, Steve Parsons. Mr. President?
Thank you, David. I want to thank you for moderating our first Town Hall related to the ballot proposition. I heard from lots of people that you were very terrific. Thank you. I've had time recently to reflect on this ballot proposition. So, in the interest of providing clarity, I went to TV 6 and recorded my opening remarks. Grant, if you would, please roll the video.
Thank you, David, and hello to everyone. Thank you for joining us today. We want to make sure the community is engaged and involved in what's happening related to our CCNRs and bylaws. It's time for straight talk. Do you want to see decreased services year after year because there is no money to cover them? Do you want your property values to go down? Or do you want to see many of your friends and neighbors be forced to leave the village? Or do you want to see your money fly out the door because we are required to be overinsured? Well, I say no to all of these questions. It's time we all wake up and take control over our retirement. I want you to listen very closely to me as I outline this problem, as some may not understand how serious it truly is. We have been working for the past year with our attorney and a variety of insurance specialists to untangle the mess that has evolved from an ever-changing insurance industry. As you all know from seeing the ravages of wildfires throughout California, insurance companies are reviewing their coverages for all over the West Coast. To continue, any coverage, we are required to get new real property evaluation. And in June of this year, we discovered from the Duff &amp; Phillips Company, an independent valuation advisory firm, that Third Mutual by itself has a value of over $1.6 billion. The other factor in all this, we may soon be flying solo with insurance coverages. GRF and United are considering moving forward independently so we may no longer have a shared premium. Our existing CCNRs mandate we have 100% coverage. Back when these rules were put into place, that was possible and affordable. But in today's world of insurance, it is not possible. And what portion we can get covered is flat-out unaffordable. The estimated property insurance cost for 2020 is $1.4 million. For 2021, the cost will be $4.2 million. Paying this amount would mean many services would cease, and our assessments would increase dramatically. Third Mutual cannot afford to pay this much for property insurance now or in the foreseeable future. We must take control of our insurance premiums in a way that is cost-effective, manageable, and realistic. We must stop this predator that hovers over us and drains us of our financial resources. So, we come to you now to sound the alarm. We are on a runway train heading off the cliff, and you are going to pay for the ride if we don't put the brakes on and try to save and protect all of our interests. We need a yes vote from every owner because our old CCNRs mandate we have 66.67% of positive votes to pass the action and adopt the new restated CCNRs and bylaws. If we don't do this, folks, the $20 assessment increase you experience in 2021 will be eclipsed in 2022 by another $94 per manor per month, as projected based on today's insurance standards and our estimated insurance premiums. Your Treasurer, Robert Mutschnick, and your First Vice President, Annie McCary, have been on Channel 6 frequently talking about this for several weeks. But we're here now to urge everyone to listen to the cold facts. If you don't vote, or if you don't vote yes, your assessments will effectively rise to the total of $114 per manor per month. That's the $20 plus the extra $94 in 2022. That's not all that far away, is it? Right now, today, we have a chance to fix the problems. After November 2nd, after the election, if this proposal doesn't pass, you can expect your assessments to go up because this crisis right now is all predicated on out-of-control insurance costs. We need the new CCNRs in place so we have better control over our future and can reduce our legal costs and in-house management time. We have heard people say, "If it's not broken, don't fix it." Well, this is just wrong for many reasons. Let me tell you why. First, some services would need to be permanently discontinued or decreased significantly. Secondly, our property values would go down. Thirdly, we have many friends and neighbors who are living on limited incomes. They would likely have to leave Third Mutual if their assessments go up much higher. We need to take care of our neighbors and friends. I too live on a limited income and have my limits on what I can afford. Like many of you, my wife and I moved here for our retirement years to make friends and embrace a suitable quality of life. Didn't you? We all realize this is a serious issue, and we are doing all we can to get the message out to you, to urge you, to implore you to vote yes on the ballot proposition. Please do it today. Do not throw away your ballot, as some have already done. Please recover that and vote. Meanwhile, we are here today to answer your questions. I know there will be many, and we want to sort them all out for each of you so you understand. It is, as we have all said, an untenable situation, but there is a solution. That's the good news we are bringing to you today. We have a way out. Our CCNRs and bylaws are already newly compiled, and they are up on our website for review during October. Well, some of you have asked for a red-line markup of the changes. What's best is to open up the PDF of the old CCNRs and the new ones and compare and contrast between the two. Because these are not red-line changes, these are modernized, recrafted, wholly-new CCNRs and bylaws which eliminate lots of the mess of the past and bring us into step with the rest of the world. The time has come, driven by the insurance debacle, to implement these new CCNRs and bylaws. This is a good thing. I think you will agree that we do not want any part of our assessments to go down the drain because we are required to be overinsured. Voting yes and getting the ballot proposition to pass will provide us the flexibility to get the Third Mutual property insurance in a controlled manner. And that will keep us all from watching our assessments go up so much each year. Right now, the insurance companies are in the control seat. We want to take the rudder and fly a different course away from catastrophe. The mess we spoke about is real and metaphoric. The mess of the insurance situation combined with a mess of thousands of rules, many of which, like the insurance mandate, are no longer necessary. Things changed, and it's not always pleasant, but we can make a positive change that will affect us immediately and in the future. That's why we say, "No mess, vote yes." Thank you for moving forward with us.
Thank you so much, Steve. That was really very, very well done. Thank you. And now, here is First Vice President Annie McCary to show you hands-on how easy it is to cast your vote by filling out your secret mail-in ballot correctly. Annie?
Thank you. Sorry about that. I was telling my story. It's probably better that you missed it anyhow. But I got my ballot in the mail, did not pay attention to all the mail that I got, so I just put it all aside. And luckily, I found it again. So, this is the error that I made, and you may find yourself with the same situation. This envelope came in the mail just like this, and I didn't pay attention, so I just put it aside. And like I said earlier, I was able to retrieve it. So, to fill out the ballot is really, really, very simple, if you know what to do. And we've actually had calls from some folks who felt that the steps were very, very, very simple and was just too easy. So, they questioned whether they were actually following the instructions correctly. So, here it goes. So, this is a secret ballot that you're going to get in the mail with the No Mess Campaign. I'd like to walk you through step-by-step how to fill out the ballot and make your vote count. Okay? So, you have your ballot. You also need a black pen or a black Sharpie. It's really, really important that you not use blue, that you not use red, use a black marker or a black pen. You should also have received the envelope in the mail, which includes your secret mail-in ballot. And it's a secret mail-in ballot because no one else gets to see how you vote. That is your private vote, and it is kept secret. So, you take everything out of the envelope. There's some additional information in the envelope. But what we're talking about really is your ballot here. This is your ballot that you're going to mark with your black pen, and it'll say, there's only two, yes and no. So, you use a black pen to fill in the yes bubble. Then, you place the ballot in the secret ballot envelopes. And some people have asked us, sometimes we use acronyms because we think we all know what we're talking about, but we realize that the public doesn't understand. So, what we're talking about SBE is your secret ballot envelope. And it actually says that this is your secret ballot envelope. Once you have filled in your yes bubble, which we're hoping that you do, you insert your ballot inside the secret ballot envelope, which is the yellow one. And then, then you place the secret ballot into the yellow envelope and seal it shut. Turn the yellow envelope over to the back and sign your name on the back of the envelope in the lower right-hand corner. And that's really it. That's the only place you sign your name. Pop this puppy in the mail as soon as possible, or drop it off in the ballot box outside the Community Center. The ballot is there already because I checked when I came in today. If you're done with that, then you voted. And if you follow these instructions, your vote yes does count. And like David said earlier, if you didn't get your ballot, or maybe you accidentally lost it or threw it out, just call the number 855-240-0363. That's the number for the Inspector of Elections Duplicate Ballot Request Call Center. You can request a new ballot, and one will be sent to you. Okay? That's it. Thank you so much for your patience. We look forward to filling your questions.
That was great. You can sit in the front row next week. Really appreciate it, Director McCary. Thank you. Before we open up for our question-and-answer session today, there are a couple of housekeeping items. People watching us on TV 6 or streaming through Granicus, you can pose a question by texting or calling this number, 949-354-4199. Please identify yourself by name and manor number when you text or call. It is our sincere intent to respond to all questions. If we run out of time, and this Town Hall is going to be longer than the last Town Hall, we will acknowledge your question and respond to you directly, as we did for the abundance of outstanding questions posed at our last Town Hall. If you do not hear from us directly, it's because the answer to your question appears in our published Frequently Asked Questions, FAQs, which you can access online. Remember, this is a question and answer forum. So, we ask that you focus on asking a question rather than making a statement or comment that is not a question. Thank you for your understanding. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to our public representatives attending via the go-to-meeting platform. First, I'd like to invite Janet Powers to the microphone, though she is one of the most prominent HOA attorneys in the business. She is here as a Third Mutual resident. Janet? The floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, David. I really appreciate the opportunity to come here today, but I do want to acknowledge that I'm probably second-sitl to Sandra Gottlieb in terms of my preeminence in the Community Association legal industry. I'm going to give you a little bit of background about myself and my husband. My husband and I have owned several homes in the village over the past 25 years. We bought units for my father and my mother-in-law because they just really loved living in the village. And I've had plenty of other relatives who've also lived here in past years. We've lived in our home in Gate 11 for the past 15 years, and we really enjoy our life here. We're always concerned with the best interests of Third, and we want to make sure that it continues to be a great place to live for everybody in the future. I'm an attorney. I've been in practice for over 35 years. I'm not retired yet. I hope to be. Instead, I'm still working full-time. I actually work remotely from home because our offices are closed during this pandemic. I'm an expert in the area of community association law, and in particular, senior communities. I'm a member of the very prestigious College of Community Association Lawyers of CAI. There's less than 200 attorneys in the country who are members of this organization, and we're all experts in community association law. I've been a member of that entity since 1995. I'm also a senior partner in the law firm of Fiori, Rakibbs, and Powers. We only represent community associations. We have five offices, and we represent thousands of associations, including large senior communities. I've represented hundreds of associations who have amended their governing documents over the years. It's a really common thing for community associations to amend their CCNRs and their bylaws, especially those communities that have older documents like Third does. I've been following the amendments for the CCNRs and the bylaws, and I kind of wanted to share my perspective with you, both as an owner and an experienced community association attorney. As an attorney, I have actually reviewed the proposed CCNRs and bylaws for Third in great detail. The CCNRs and bylaws are part of what we call the governing documents for the association, and every owner is legally bound by these governing documents when we purchase. So, those CCNRs and bylaws are legally extremely important to both Third and to us as owners. So, what Third is doing here is it's trying to bring the CCNRs and bylaws up to current legal requirements in the state of California, and to use the kind of language and provisions that would be used in new governing documents today that a developer would use when developing a new project. Now, many things have changed since the '70s when our governing documents were written. We're not all dressing the same, and we don't drive the same cars as we did in the '70s. But we're still functioning under the same set of CCNRs as were originally written. So, it's way past time to bring those into compliance with new laws in California and the federal laws as well. The proposed CCNRs and bylaws are legally just fine. They're basically what my law firm would have prepared if we were drafting those. And there will, there's going to be language in the new CCNRs and bylaws regarding the insurance requirements. They're basically what my law firm would have prepared if we were drafting those. And there will, there's going to be language in the new CCNRs and bylaws regarding the insurance requirements. That's very important because the current provisions that are in our CCNRs with regard to insurance are very, very burdensome. They were written, as Bill mentioned, at a time that, I'm sorry, Steve mentioned, at a time when insurance was cheap and easy to get, and so we could afford to put in governing documents, the fact that you carried insurance to cover 100% replacement of everything. That's no longer the standard. It hasn't been for probably 15 to 20 years because insurance is very, very expensive and difficult to get. So the kind of requirements that are in the CCNRs now are not what would be in CCNRs that would be written today. But frankly, me and most of my neighbors are really not concerned with complicated legal issues and changes in the governing documents. Instead, we're very concerned with our monthly assessments. We currently pay $652 a month, and that's a lot of money. And under the new 2021 budget, we're going to pay $672 a month, and obviously, that's even more money. No one wants to pay too much, or especially pay for something that we don't really need. But the legal reality is that the old CCNRs have a lot of outdated requirements, including the insurance requirements to carry certain kinds and amounts of insurance that Third has to continue to carry until the CCNRs are changed. To meet the old CCNR requirements is really impossible without a huge assessment increase. It's just going to be too expensive to continue to comply with what the requirements are of the current CCNRs. So let me tell you what I see here as a community association lawyer and as an owner. If we don't amend the CCNRs, then we're going to be paying at least $94 per month, per home, more in 2022 just for insurance. That's $1,140 a year in assessment increases in 2022 just to pay for insurance alone. That means we're going to pay $766 per home, per month, in 2022. That's a, that's a huge amount. And that doesn't even include whatever additional assessments are going to be needed to pay for other things, like repair of our buildings and maintenance, et cetera. So the assessments could even be higher than that. Most of my neighbors, most of my friends here in the village are on fixed incomes, and they're living in a 1% investment world, not making too much on their savings. Most owners are retired, and they don't bring home a paycheck every single month to pay for these big assessment increases. The impact of this huge assessment increase on many of our friends and neighbors is going to be catastrophic. They just can't afford it. I could spend a lot of time talking about the boring legalities of the CCNRs and bylaws, which the lawyers in the audience would just love, but the rest of you probably would be bored out of your minds. But I don't need to. Attorney Sandra Gottlieb and her law firm have done a superb job on these governing documents, and I don't need to dwell on those, and neither do you. What we really need to be worried about as homeowners in Third is passing this vote to amend the CCNRs and bylaws. That should be job one for all of us. So while the lawyers are concerned with problems of mess, paperwork, and even though I'm a lawyer, I'm concerned with the money. So I'm here to tell you to vote yes or pay a lot more. And let me say that again. Vote yes or pay a lot more money, because that's the reality of what's going to happen if you don't vote yes and we don't get the CCNR amendment. My husband, who has a degree and background in economics and finance, and I are going to vote yes, and so should you. And you don't need to be a community association lawyer to know how to vote. You can make a difference here. When you get your ballot, vote right away and send it back as quickly as possible. And tell your neighbors to vote yes or pay a lot more money. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Powers. By the way, do you have a specific question that you'd like to address to the members here?
I think my question just is that I presume that everyone understands that if we don't amend the CCNRs, that the board will need to continue to try to meet the current CCNR requirements with regard to insurance.
Yeah, and that's very tough to do.
Yes, Janet.
We just flat can't afford it. Go ahead, Sandra.
I was just going to say that the board understands that obligation, but, you know, we always think that there's always insurance at some place. We now learned that is not true. And to, for this association, to obtain $1.6 billion worth of coverage is not obtainable. Even going to Lloyds of London, we couldn't get the insurance for a full insurable amount as required under the governing document. So the board will continue to endeavor to meet all of those obligations to the extent that insurance is available.
Thanks, Sandra.
Thank you. Let's move on, please. I'd like you all to welcome Mr. Young Park of the Korean American Club to pose his question. Mr. Park? All right, you have your microphone turned on?
Okay, I got it.
Ah, there we are. Well done.
Thank you for inviting. Hey, my name is Young Chin Park. Firstly, I want to say make sure you got a crack. I live 2012, and about eight years, it was $570. I thought that's pretty good, but every year moving on and on, now $670, which is present posture and this power talking about retire, senior retire person, all our diligence is our limit income. Actually, 1970 or 80, 90, 2000, those who are retired are social security or pension is fixed. It is very difficult. You can move anytime, but our life is getting really tough. Here is my small statement. I have a very short. Like I say, I have lived here since 2012, and the HOA fee was 570. So Third Mutual announced 2021 will be 670, and will continue increase the fee year after year from additional $90. Well, HOA fee continue to increase. Again, my sixth income stay the same. In additional to the HOA fee being increased, the recreation activity in many of the area have been remaining closed. This time a little bit different, surely, but how do you justify reducing the amenity for increasing HOA fee and retire senior with a limited income? That's my biggest challenge with it. And it is. Some of them retire 70, 80, 90, 2000. It's a totally different social security or pension. Well, all board or whoever delegate, we should be all say yes, we should be fight back and low as possible. We understand everyone, and then we should be all the way through. And our board member or legal counsel should be, will be behind you and make it possible. And it's the bottom line, my statement, I'd love to stay here, but if you continue to raise the HOA fee, I have no choice. Get Google out over here. I don't know, that could be 22 or 22, 23, depending on how and what's the next result.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate your input. And I'm looking forward to, we're practically neighbors, and I'm looking forward to seeing you maybe in 2025, okay? So you can stay around in the community. Thank you so much. We appreciate your contribution, sir. Okay? Did you have a question you wanted to ask?
He did.
Okay? And are you satisfied with the answer to that question?
No, no, we got a human answer.
He's going to answer. Then, Robert, we're going to defer that to Robert.
Okay. Mr. Pack, I certainly understand your situation. Your situation is very similar to lots of other people in the village. Let me start by separating for you and maybe for some other people where there's some confusion of what Third Mutual controls and what GRF controls. Because you talked about the amenities, and you're right, the amenities have been closed, all right? And there have been some savings from the amenities. The sad part is that Third Mutual does not benefit in any way, shape, or form from the savings as a result of the amenities being closed. That's a GRF responsibility. Let me show you a slide. Grant, if you would, from the new slides, those three slides, if you would put up the first slide, I would appreciate that. I'm going to show you a couple of slides, Mr. Pack, and then you'll take a look. The first slide that you'll see hopefully will be a demonstration of what our assessment is going to be. You got that, Grant? Yeah, that's the slide. Okay, if you'd just share that with everybody. All right, Mr. Pack, if you can see this slide that's before you, this shows you that under our current business plan, you'll see at the bottom of the slide, it says for 2021, and the figure there is $466.62. That's actually the basic assessment for Third Mutual, all right? Now, in the next slide, Grant, if you would put the next slide up, keep that figure in mind, Mr. Pack, the $466. You'll see here it says $672. That's actually what you're going to be required to pay as all of us are going to be required for next year. However, this $672 includes $205 per month that comes off the top of the assessment that goes to GRF to pay for the amenities, the, the operation of the amenities and the maintenance of the amenities. We have, as Third Mutual, no control over that $205. That goes immediately to GRF. So any savings from the amenities being closed, GRF keeps that money. We don't see any of it, okay? So I want you to understand that we don't have in Third, we wish we did, but we don't have in Third any final and actual control over the monies that go to GRF to support the amenities. And I'm sorry to say that that's the case. But we do have control over other aspects of what happens in Third, and obviously, that's why we want everybody to vote yes on the proposition before you regarding the CCNRs so that we can control those things that are literally within our control. I hope that helps.
Steve, please.
Yeah, I'd like to just add to that, too, that even though we are not handling the amenities, there are other things that continue that we have to pay for. And I'll just run through a few of them. Staff salaries, okay, to keep them on board. Utilities continue on, we must pay. Project contracts to maintain our facility, and outside services are a huge part of what we have to do. Now, you may say, okay, we have contracts that we could delete. Well, not necessarily so. Or you might have your building fall down around you. Remember, we're doing prior to paint, we're doing paint schemes, we're also going through looking for, oh, dry rot, if I can get that up on my mind here, and repairing those things. So without constant maintenance, things would go downhill in a hurry. So please keep this in mind, and like Robert said, keep the amenities out of this, just think about what Third Mutual has to do, and that's repair and maintenance of what we're dealing with in Third Mutual. We have over 1,400 structures. And guess what, folks? Up until about three and a half years ago, four years ago, they were not maintained properly. Our previous professional management company didn't keep them up, and a lot of people that were enlightened at that time came forward and said, enough's enough, we'll take care of it on our own. So we have been self-governed since then, and we've been making these repairs as necessary. So you may not see what's going on, but remember, the infrastructure really counts. Annie, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think you covered that very well, President Parsons. Thank you.
Thank you all. Mr. Pack, do you feel as though your question has been answered? I certainly learned a lot from these individuals. There's certainly a lot going on behind the scenes and things about which we know very little. Thank you. And how about you, Mr. Pack? Are you satisfied with your answers to the question?
I understand that. And when I moved in, I don't know anything about rule and regulations, what's the, any my responsibility. Live eight years, finally, I understand what is Third Mutual rule and regulation. But when newcomer, they don't know anything about your statistic, just to HOA. Okay? Time's changing. And then, once you involve typically those who are attending meeting, and then they do understand, but many of them, I don't know what percentage, a meeting to be attended, they're very limited. It's a lot of good goal for, any goal for issue, like people come over hundreds and two, three hundred people, but regular meeting, basically less than 100. Anyway, those who are attending meeting and know what is about, but those not, basically send bill, we pay. That's about it. That's I'm concerned, you know, we should more educated about Laguna Woods life or Laguna Woods rule and regulations. But at least to my, our Korean community, it's very strong. I campaign to as much I can and say yes. But the other hand, it is true, what percentage in Laguna Woods citizen will be able to understanding and statistic as what you show? Thank you.
I'll just respond to Mr. Pack, if that's okay?
Certainly.
Mr. Pack, I know that I speak for, not only for myself, but other members of the Third Board. We would be very happy to come out and meet with clubs and organizations. We'll do that now virtually. For instance, on Wednesday, tomorrow evening, from 7:00 to 8:30, I'm meeting with the Garden Villa Association and the building captains to answer questions they have and address the CCNRs as well. And I know that myself and other board members would be delighted if we got invited to meet with other clubs and organizations to present information and help keep people informed and up to date.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert.
I understand. Once again, I'm not...
Thank you. When I moved to Laguna Woods 15 years ago, I discovered that there was United, there was Third, there was the One Tens, there was GRF, and it took me a while to get them sorted out, okay? And it's partly the owner's responsibility to sort it out, but also I think the corporation has a responsibility to make sure that that information is available. And your question certainly was well put. Thank you so much, Mr. Pack. Appreciate it. Are you all set, Mr. Pack? Very good. Thank you so much, okay? And now I'd like to invite Dr. C.C. Lee, board member for the Laguna Woods Foundation, and the Chinese American Club to pose his question. Dr. Lee, if you please.
Hello. My name is Jia Chan Lee. Friends call me C.C., C.C. Lee. I live in Gate 7 and Gate 8 area, and I have moved in to Laguna Woods Village from Los Angeles since 2015. We, my wife and I enjoy living here, and also we appreciate that the HOA has done a good job in maintaining the beautiful environment and the quality of, enjoy the quality of life and in our retirement. Of course, I would like to see, don't like to see any of the increase of monthly fees Of course, I would like to see, don't like to see any of the increase of monthly fees, but we understand the situation. And so I agree with the proposed changes on the CCNR and bylaws in order to achieve this purpose. I voted a yes. In the meantime, I recently studied the situation with the president of the Chinese American Club Chairman, Ms. Irene Chen. And we translated the major points of this coming up election to explain to the Chinese club members and to vote a yes. And she also posted in the club website and clearly explained everything. So I want to take this opportunity to address to our Chinese community, people and friends of the Asians, folks, to send in the vote and vote a yes to achieve this purpose. Thank you very much. I think I pretty much understand the situation and agree with the decision, so everybody's feeling. For this situation of the election, I would like to know the directed impacts to our residents if the proposition don't get passed, and also the, including the services, the quality of the services, we try to maintain the same, at least the same or better, and so make this very clear to us. Thank you.
Anyone on the panel care to address that? What's Plan B?
Do you know what? I'll start, and I'll start by using Janet's words. Vote yes or pay a lot more money. Bottom line, we're not unsympathetic, we understand, we sympathize with people on fixed incomes or limited incomes. We understand, we live here, and everything that we do affects us as well. So the bottom line is, if we don't get the votes passed, the assessments are going to go up.
We don't have a Plan B at the moment. We are only operating on the basis of being successful and getting the community to support voting yes on the CCNRs. That's our plan.
I love your optimism. Let's hope it pays off. Steve, you have anything to address that?
Well, just a follow-on. If you vote yes and it passes, then it gives us greater flexibility, and it does allow us to look at insurance in a whole different way, as well as maybe some other programs that we have. So without it, we are basically not flexible. So we want you to understand that, and like I said in my little talk, let's be frank and get the facts out. It's just going to happen. And if you don't want it to happen, you don't want the train to run over the hill, vote yes.
I totally understand that. Just a little short story. Before I moved to Laguna Woods Village, I lived in a log cabin in the Catskill Mountains, and my closest neighbor was a quarter of a mile, okay? We waved to each other, but here it's quite different. There are, there are three units in, in my building, okay? And we are very, very, very much dependent on our neighbors here, unlike my situation in New York. So we're not only responsible for ourselves, we are responsible for our neighbors. So if you have the opportunity to talk to your neighbors, one way or the other, please, please, please suggest that they vote yes and get us out of this mess, okay? All right, let's move on, okay? Our next distinguished guest, okay, and again, thank you, Dr. Lee, is Willie Phillips. Willie, would you please address your question to the panel?
Yes, can you hear? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, your mic is on. Thank you.
Hello. Okay. My name is Willie Phillips. I live in, south of Gate 9. Thank you for the opportunity and afforded me this opportunity to ask these questions. I, I, like Mr. Park, had a question about the HOA assessments, and you spoke to it rather well. Just a follow-up on that, I'm curious as to, is there anything that the owners or the citizens can do to help regulate that? Do we just have to take whatever the HOA Association powers that be say about that?
Gentlemen, ladies...
Sure. Robert? Willie, I'll be happy to follow up on that. The answer is yes. There's lots that the members can do. Obviously, they can attend board meetings, they can attend the GRF meetings as well and provide input, they can get involved in committees and participate that way and help to try to control costs within the village. So there's lots that members can actually do if they're willing, but it takes getting involved, takes attending, takes participating, and the answer is yes, they can help to influence what happens with both the HOA fees at the mutual level and at the GRF level.
Thank you, Robert. Steve, would you care to address that? Or Annie?
Well, I think you said it pretty well. There are other things, I was just making a note here. One thing that we've experienced in the past, and I haven't brought it up, and I think it's a good time, when we get new people here, a lot of times they will think that living in here is the same as living outside the walls. It isn't. You've got rules, you've got assessments, you've got things that you've got to live by, and a lot of people don't like that, we've found. And so they come forward to us, we can't get it resolved with them in a timely manner. So it leads to what I call frivolous lawsuits. And even though a person has a right to bring that forward, it costs us dearly. I mean, you talk about legal fees, when somebody just doesn't agree with us for some reason, it drives up the legal cost. And we try to talk to people and get them to understand, you're in a new environment, you have to look at it differently, and you have to look for your neighbors, you have to see what's best for the common good, and cost sharing and things like this, that they're not used to looking at when they're outside the walls. So that's one huge thing that you can help us with in dealing with newcomers. Try to get to them and say, oh, okay, yeah, we really like it here, we understand. You need to be aware of certain things that you're held accountable for. Unfortunately, several of these people that move in do not see that before they arrive here, and they think it's the same as outside. But I'll get off my soapbox, but that's another area where you could really help us by orienting new arrivals. Would really help.
It's incumbent on the new arrivals to do their due diligence, but it's also, as I said before, incumbent on the village to make sure that people are aware of what the situation is here. Nobody bothered me in a log cabin, especially in the winter.
I had a feedback for Willie Phillips.
Great, thank you.
David?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to speak to one other issue that Mr. Phillips brought up in terms of what residents can do. One of the ways, our hands are tied right now with the insurance, our property evaluation. We've increased much in our evaluation of the property, but in addition to that, we are in Orange County, which is a high fire risk area, and there's nothing we can do about that. There's nothing that we can do about the insurance companies raising their, their rates up to the roof. So what Director Parsons said about the other stuff that we can do as residents, those are really, really good. Just keep in mind that with the insurance and the issue that we're really, really pressed with today, we're doing the best we can. The insurance is really, really the driving force for this issue.
That's right, and we need their help, and that's why they need to vote yes.
Yes, absolutely. They can help themselves. Yes, Steve?
It looks like Janet Powers might like to make a supplemental comment to this of any sort. Anything you'd like to say, Janet?
Unmute, unmute myself there. Well, I think everyone has said it all. I think it takes the village, no pun intended, but we really are interdependent upon each other, not just as neighbors, but we're a senior community, and not all of our neighbors are created equal. They're not functioning well, they, they may have physical or mental disabilities or challenges, and I think part of our obligation as, as members and owners and neighbors is to talk to those folks and let them know what's going on, because I'm doubting they're really watching this broadcast, and they may not really understand the mailers that are coming out. So I think all of you, through your various interest groups that you represent, bring something very special to enable you to reach communities that other folks, including Third, might not be able to do. But I think we'll be knocking on some doors and doing what we can to try to talk to people that I know just really otherwise wouldn't understand what's being voted on, they wouldn't understand the issues, and just try to raise the awareness and get them to vote. I think that's a challenge for all of us.
It is, it is definitely a challenge and, and one that poses some interesting, generates some interesting conversations, knock on doors, okay? Yeah. Yes. Dr. Lee? Okay?
Yeah?
Yes, go right ahead, sir.
Okay. Now, okay, with the recent change, the climate changes, particularly this year, and everybody should be aware of, the insurance cost raise is an irreversible situation. And so to understand this situation, the current proposal is the effective way to mitigate facing the current reality. It is very important. And Janet, I'm sorry, Irene Chen and myself, we studied this situation and translated the, in Chinese, and to many of our community folks, the Chinese people, and I think most of it is understanding the situation. And so encourage everybody to vote a yes. Okay?
Thank you. We need your help. Let's move on, please. At this time, I'd like to invite Bill Walsh to pose his question. Bill, if you would, please. Bill, you need to turn on your mic?
It might help if I unmuted, wouldn't it?
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Okay, I'm there. Okay. Thank you, David. First, before I ask my question, or questions, I might have a couple. I would like to thank this board and Sandra Gottlieb and her, her, her legal team for taking on the challenge of restating the CCNRs. As a former board member, three or four years ago, we actually talked about doing this, restating the CCNRs. And it was such a daunting, it was so daunting for us, that we, like previous boards, Third Boards, kicked the can down the road proverbially. We said, we don't want to tackle this, we've got to deal with infrastructure issues in the community, dry rot, plumbing, sewers. We have to deal with, in my case, a lot of energy issues. The board was very open to trying to save money. They allocated funds to put a 1.3 kilowatt, 1.3 megawatt system of solar panels on 12 different buildings, saving the community somewhere around $150,000 a year in electric bills. This same board, this board right here, allocated money to, to replace the streetlights with LED lights, which gave us better lighting, and this last year saved us $57,000 in electricity fees with Edison. People in, for the last 10 or 12, about 10 years now, have been looking for places to save money in the energy area. For instance, all the standalone laundry rooms and the laundry rooms in the three-story buildings. We replaced hot water heaters that were too big, we were paying a lot of electricity heating up water that wasn't doing us any good. And it's things like that, the lighting in the three-story buildings, in the carports, have been converted to LED lighting. And it was really, it, it, it really alarmed me and made me really sad to see that all of those efforts to try to save money in this community were going to be negated by these dramatic increases in our insurance bill. And I'm really thankful that you, this, this board has taken the bull by the horns and tried to do something for it, for the community. And I want to add one other thing. I want people in this community to know that all of the board members are residents here. They have to abide by the same rules that everybody else does, and they're volunteers. And I have never met a board member in the, in the 13 years I've lived in this community that I totally agreed with all the time, but every one of them was always trying to do and make this community better. And I think this is a big step in helping to make our community better for the long run. So off my soapbox, and my question is actually a very practical one that one of my neighbors asked me, and hopefully it's easy to answer. How are you going to keep residents from putting ballots for the national election in the drop box outside of the community center? That's the one, that's the first question.
Okay, let's address the first question first, and then we'll come to the second question, okay? Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's silent.
Okay. Let's, do you, would you care to weigh in on that, Eileen?
Well, let's begin by saying we're going to hope that people are reading, but we do know better occasionally, errors are made. There is a great big sign on the box that has a sample of the Third and the United ballot. I would certainly hope that people would read the sign carefully and not put their presidential ballot in that box. That box is available at City Hall, which we continue to tell people, but it's a good point, maybe we need a big X over a presidential ballot out there on the box.
It would be interesting to see the count if that happens. Next question, you had two, Bill. Second question, please.
Basically, second question coming at you. It's more of a question to the, to the lawyers in the group. Given that there will be changes to the David Sterling Act in the future, are the new CCNRs written such that they will be easily modified, if necessary, to comply with the changes in the state common interest development or HOA law? Please elaborate.
So they were drafted with that in mind. We did not refer by section numbers in the governing documents to current provisions in the David Sterling Act. Rather, we referred to topic areas and then provided provisions would say that the governing documents and the enforcement will comply with current federal, state, and local laws. So they will, in the moment, be consistent at any one particular time.
Thank you.
Bill, are you satisfied? You all good with those responses?
I'm good. I'm good, Dave. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Let's move on, we'd like to keep this rolling because we want to have time for some questions from outside, okay? At this time, I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Lynn Jarrett, who is a board member. Lynn, please.
Good afternoon. First, I will tell you a short story. As Chair of Third Board's Landscape Committee, I find that our meetings are a constant reminder of the threat of possible fires starting in the building, starting in the wilderness park right outside our gates. This leaves us vulnerable. Our landscape director, director... Our landscape director, director meets regularly with the Orange County Fire Authority who suggests where we need to keep the brush cleared and how far out we need clearance. Our property insurance carriers used to be fine with the 30-foot clearance that we have now. When meeting with the brokers over the past few months, we were told we needed 100-foot clearance. On the day of our last insurance meeting, we were told by one of our biggest carriers, we needed 300 feet or more, and that may not be enough due to embers flying during wildfires or on a windy day. We are, uh, we are at the mercy of the agencies that are, including some of the environmental ones associated with the wild park, wilderness park, to allow us to have a wire fire break. We just can't go out there and make our, the wire fire break on our own. We have to get approval from several entities. In the meantime, California is burning and there seems to be no stopping it for now. All the scientists say that. All of this came at a bad time this year when we were trying to obtain our property insurance. In any, in any case, now you see a big reason for the property insurance carriers to reassess our properties and then go after us for much higher rates. Just a little history for you. Um, I do have a few questions. As a Third Board member, I get approached with a lot of questions. The most common one I get, however, is really multifold. Number one, what do you, what do our skyrocketing insurance rates have to do with voting to change our CCNRs? And by the way, what exactly is a CCNR? And how will changing those CCNRs actually help keep our assessment fees under control? Could you please explain, explain the connection so we can vote yes and pay less?
Um, I believe we have a really good answer for that. Robert, and I believe he has a visual.
I do have some visuals, uh, but before I do that, let me just tell everybody, in case there's, uh, lack of understanding, CCNR stands for covenants, conditions, and restrictions. And I also want to share with you an easy way to see the new bylaws and the new CCNRs. I'm going to give you, uh, a URL so that you can go on the computer and if you type this in, you'll be able to see the CCNRs. The URL for the CCNRs is T as in Tom, N as in Nancy, Y as in yellow, dot, S as in Sam, H as in Howard, forward slash CCRs. I'll repeat that. That's TNY, it should be on your screen right now, TNY dot HS forward slash CCRs. That will take you directly to the new CCNRs. Now, if you want to see the bylaws, the new bylaws, it's the same. It's TNY dot HSH forward slash bylaws, and that will take you to the brand-new bylaws. And if you want to do the comparison, as was suggested earlier, to see the old bylaws or the old CCNRs, you can go to the Laguna Woods Village website, click on residents, then click on Third Mutual and documents, and you'll be able to see the old CCNRs or the ones that we have right now, and you'll be able to do a comparison with the brand-new CCNRs. So I hope that'll help in terms of people having access to that information. But to answer some of the questions that Director Jarrett raised, I'm going to bring up, because I don't know how many people who are watching today saw this presentation previously, but I think it's important for you to understand. This slide that is in front of you has some very important information that maybe will put things in perspective. And I draw your attention to the line that says property premiums on the left. I'm going to talk about the property insurance because that's the one that is having the single greatest impact on our future. If you'll notice that in 2020, okay, it says annual premium, $700 million, that's the amount of insurance we got. We spent $1,413,874. That's with a $10,000 deductible. That's what our premium cost us in, for 2020. For 2021, which is where we are now in terms of what our premium is going to be, we budgeted $3,087,644 to buy. Now, look at the last column on the far right. You'll see 2021, the actual premium. The actual premium to buy the same $700 million of insurance is now $4,147,495. And that, folks, is with a $25,000 deductible per incident, okay? So you can see that our insurance has gone up just for property threefold this year, okay, over last year, all right? Now, we did not pass on the total cost of our, of our increased insurance to you as a member. We passed on $20 per manor per month, okay? The Third Mutual is absorbing out of our reserves the additional money to pay for the insurance. If you'll notice in the bottom right-hand corner of the slide, the line that says grand total, our grand total of the cost of all of our insurances this year is $4,949,000. If you look back two columns, you'll see that in 2020, our total cost of insurance was $2,038,000. So our insurance costs just for this year have more than doubled, okay? Grant, if you go to the next slide, I think that'll help people even more. All right, folks. If you look at the top-left side, it says assessment increase for 2021. That's the $20 that we're, feel compelled to pass on to each member per manor per month, all right? So that increases for the year $240, all right? Next column down, it says cost of insurance that we are actually paying out of reserves in addition to that $20 per manor per month. That's $48 per manor per month that's being absorbed by Third Mutual out of reserves, okay? If you'll notice in the third line down, additional assessment increase in 2022. If we are to cover the full $8,350,000, which is what it would cost us to buy insurance by ourselves without our partners that we've had previously, United and GRF, who have indicated they're going their own way, if we have to buy the same $700 million of insurance next year by ourselves, our total premium would be approximately $8,350,000, all right? That would be a $94 increase over the $20 increase that you're paying this year. And that's why it's so important for you to vote yes, because we want to do what we can. That doesn't mean there won't be an increase. There still will probably be an increase even if you give approval to the CCNRs. The difference is it'll be hopefully substantially less than the $94. And I hope that answers that question related to the CCNRs and why we, why it's so important for you folks to vote yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Robert. And you can see numerically how it's so, it's so important to vote yes, okay? Thank you. Um, you have...
Thank you very much.
Yep, okay, very good. Um, then we have Robert's direction here, okay? Annie or Steve, would you like to add anything to that?
No, I think that was pretty clear.
That's very clear. I have nothing more to add, thank you.
Great, the graphic was wonderful. Thank you so much. Lynn, how are we doing with answering your question?
Oh, that's fine. Did a fine job, Robert, and I want to invite people to vote yes, yes.
How many times have we said vote yes? Have we said it enough?
Vote yes.
I love vote yes and the yes, okay? Um, and now we'd like to take some questions from the folks out in the viewing audience, uh, from the folks watching. Um, we gave you those numbers before and, um, perhaps we have some call-in questions or some text-in questions. I'd like to direct your attention to Eileen Pollan, who's been fielding those questions. Eileen, thank you.
Thank you, David. I've also been asked just to clarify something about the ballot box. I didn't have my glasses on when I was out there this morning, and there is a large sign. The other thing I think is very important for people to know is that an inspector of elections oversees all of this. No one's allowed to touch the ballots in any way that's not very official, but that box is being checked on a regular basis. And if there are any federal ballots in it, they will be mailed into the voting center. So I just wanted to let you all know that you don't really need to worry about that.
Are there poll watchers there?
We might need you. Who knows? Hopefully we can, we can trust our residents.
I'm, I'm sure, okay? Never, never can be too cautious.
So our first question is from Mr. Jerry Meng. His address is 2396 Villa Mariposa. He says, let's vote yes. That resolved. How much insurance can we afford to carry and what is the risk of not being able to replace in case of severe damage such as an extensive fire or earthquake as replacement costs continue to soar?
That's a great question and one that's been on my mind as well. Um, Robert, would you like to begin here?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, it's a great question and thank you for asking it. Let me start by saying that we have no idea, assuming that the CCNRs pass and everybody votes yes, we have no idea what the cost of actual insurance is going to be next year. We don't know in terms of the impact of the wildfires. We don't know in terms of the impact of the new evaluation that we have, how much more that's going to add, what insurance companies are going to charge us next year. That's one of the reasons we need to figure out what's not only affordable, but what is reasonable. And we have had, over the last 20 years, we've never had a claim in any one year of more than $10 million within the village, okay? Uh, we're not talking about dropping our insurance from $700 million down to $20 million, $30 million. We're not talking about that. We're talking about coverage that would be reasonable in terms of any kind of large occurrence that might take place, that we would be covered, that we don't have to go to the membership for any kind of special assessment. That's our, that's our plan, but I can't give you an exact figure because we have no idea what it's going to be for next year.
Steve or Annie?
I have no, nothing else to add to that. Great job, thank you.
Uh, I will add that, uh, we've had a company that I, that was mentioned in my opening comments there that came in and looked at what could possibly be the worst-case scenario for loss in the village. And, uh, they came up with a figure of 150 million lost in one event, okay? So we're kind of looking at that and playing off of that as to what we think would be reasonable. Um, if we're given the flexibility to do something and the lenders are willing, we would probably be looking in the neighborhood of maybe two or three times that, okay? But nothing to cover the 1.6 billion that cover over 1,400, uh, 1,400 structures just in Third alone. We have to be reasonable and look at the threat, so to speak, uh, our, let's just take it, for instance, what's the worst case that could probably happen to Third Mutual? I'm not talking about the village, just talking about Third Mutual. It would probably be an earthquake, okay? Fire, we can probably rally and get that put out pretty quick. Uh, we have started putting in composite roofs. We start putting in, uh, plants that don't have flammable oils in them. Uh, we've taken down things on our hillsides that would be fuel generators per se. Uh, we don't have to worry really about liquefaction because we only have one small area in Third that's even subject to liquefaction, whereas, uh, United has quite a bit, okay? We are really on, uh, pretty solid ground here. And you'll look, gate 14 is away from us, gate 11 is away from us, so we're geographically separated. So what affects one probably wouldn't affect the other. So, oh, okay. So anyway, uh, those are things we're looking at and taking into consideration, and that's why we're looking at maybe two, three times what that 150 million would be.
Great, thank you. Um, may we have the next question, please?
Yes, the next question is from V. Mary Baumel at 3230 Villa Coriso. What will the gap or percentage of difference be between replacement coverage and the proposed CCNRs and the level of coverage proposed under the changes? And then she has a second question, but maybe we'll take that one first.
Let's take the questions in the order, which they have been given to us. Thank you.
I'm not really sure.
Um, Robert? I see your hand way...
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Sure. What will the gap or percentage difference be between replacement coverage in the proposed CCNRs and the level of coverage proposed under the changes?
Wow. If I can try to interpret that as best I can, uh, maybe the caller is asking, currently it's 100% replacement, okay? That would mean if we got full replacement coverage, that would be $1.6 billion. First of all, $1.6 billion, our brokers have told us, is not available. But even if it was available, the premium, as I showed you before, would be about $8 million for coverage next year. That's for 700 million. So you can extrapolate from there and see what it might cost potentially if we were able to even get 1.6. What we're looking at, it's not a gap, what we're looking at is what is the market, the standard for the market, and what is reasonable, what we can, what can we afford? Those are the guiding criteria. And the answer is going to be when we go out into the market next year, when everybody votes yes on these CCNRs, we'll be able to then have more room to negotiate and to leverage the cost for the benefit of the Third Mutual members.
What I understand from that is if you vote yes, you're untying the hands of the board members here to make good, reasonable, rational choices regarding our Third Mutual, okay?
Yes.
And there was a second question, I believe.
And the second part of her question was, in regards to Exhibit E, what are the significant changes between the existing CCNRs and the newly proposed ones?
Okay, let me address that since I was responsible basically for that matrix. As, in addition to my being treasurer, I'm also Chair of the M&amp;C Committee, the Maintenance and Construction Committee, which deals with all these kinds of things. What we put in that matrix is basically what represents the current situation for Third Mutual. So the things that are checked is responsibilities for the corporation versus the manor owners. That is information that we just put into that matrix based on our understanding of what currently is. Is it possible that there is a, a Scribner error, that a box was checked when it should have been the other box? Absolutely. And if it's a Scribner error that somebody points out to us, we'll be more than happy to make that change. But if people have specific questions about the matrix, I'll be happy to answer those specific questions about who's responsible and why. And I'll just give you an example. We did have one question from an individual that wanted to know about carports and garages and who is responsible for the maintenance and painting, for instance, within the carports. And the answer is that the, while garages, the inside of the garages are the responsibility of the member, the inside of the carports are the responsibility of the mutual in terms of painting and maintenance and upkeep, unless the person has altered some component to that carport. If they have altered some component of that carport, then they, as an owner, are responsible for that alteration. So that's one thing that's in the, in the CCNRs. Another question we had about the matrix, somebody wrote in and asked, what about the pipelines? We have no pipeline, I mean, gas pipes. The answer is yes, we do. In the 110 units, there are some units that have gas, and that's why that component is in there. I think we're running out of time in terms of TV6.
Yep, we are. We're getting close. Um, anybody else? Steve, Annie, we all good?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Let's move on. Take another question.
All right. Uh, this question is from Catherine Freshley at 595490 North Cusco Del Lago. And I believe she is directing this to Sandra. First question is, since the CCNRs are totally new, does this revised document change the contractual relationship to the current owners?
Sandra?
So I believe, I believe I heard you, it was a little bit difficult. I think that you asked if the, since the governing documents are brand-new, does it change the contractual relationship between the owners and the entity? Is that a good summary of the question?
That's, yes, that's the question.
Uh, the contractual relationship of the CCNRs and the owners, uh, which are covenants that attach to the land, so the reported document attaches to the unit for each owner in Third Mutual, that already exists, and we're just shifting that obligation from the existing governing documents to the restated governing documents. There's no stopgap where the obligation... There's no stopgap where the obligation would not be ongoing and existing.
That was very clear. Thank you very much, Sandra. Anyone on the board care to answer that, okay? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. We'll just take one more, I guess.
Yep.
Again, Ms. Freshley is referring to why Exhibit E included, why is it included in the new document? Many items change the responsibilities for repair and maintenance of our structures.
Clear on that question?
We just included it because we thought it would be helpful, but we certainly can reconsider that, and that might be something to think about, what she's suggesting.
Mm-hmm. Great. I have every confidence personally that the Third Board, as it exists, has done a brilliant job and has spent lots and lots of hours putting this presentation together. I have every confidence in what you've done so far, and I'm going to extrapolate on that a little bit. I have every confidence in the members of the community, the Third Mutual members of the community, to have sense enough to do your due diligence, take a look at the propositions, take a look at the charts and graphs, and vote yes on this proposition. I am encouraged. Are we finished with the questions?
Absolutely. We have one more from Catherine Freshley, and that is, "Has the board obtained a clean legal opinion that this solicitation from more than 500 individuals for acceptance of the new CCNRs complies with federal and state securities consumer protection laws?"
Again, I assume we've done our due diligence. Care to address that, Steve?
I think it's better answered by Sandra.
Sandra, are we legal?
Yeah, I'd like Janet--
Janet, you can weigh in as well.
We have done our due diligence. We have done our due diligence. There have been some questions, such as Ms. Freshley's, about whether there are other laws that would be controlling over the association's ability to restate its governing documents under the Davis Sterling Act and under the terms of its own governing documents. And the controlling laws do not require us to have to submit the association's proposed restated governing documents to any securities review. Janet, I'm always hopeful for your input if you have any.
Yeah, I'll weigh in. I haven't done the research, and honestly, I don't feel like I need to do the research. I think that's a really great question by Ms. Freshley, but the association isn't currently subject to any federal outstanding FHA loans or other types of federal guarantees that would require that, nor is it subject to Blue Sky laws. This isn't like selling a timeshare or other federally regulated securities that would require that, but it's a really good question, and I think the answer is no. And I think, in addition, what the focus of council has been, and properly so, is meeting all of the Davis Sterling requirements for governing documents. It's our main body of legislation that controls what community associations do in California. So she and her staff and her team have all been very focused on making sure that the new governing documents will be in compliance with the Davis Sterling Act, the California Corporations Code, and all of the case law in California that's come down over the years that has interpreted those documents, as well as their housing laws and other types of laws. And I feel confident, after having looked at them, that it is more than in compliance. It's actually being very proactive and far-sighted in anticipating what we envision those laws will be in the next few years based upon the direction that the courts are taking some of these issues.
Well answered. Thank you so much, Janet. That's excellent. That's it? That it did for our question-and-answer session. May I remind you that if you have a question, you certainly may text it. And last time, we put up an email address where you could send your question, and your question will be answered in a timely manner. So stay tuned, okay? And unfortunately, we have run out of time today. Brings our question-and-answer session to a close, our town meeting almost to a close. Great questions and answers. I'm sure our community appreciates the candor and up-to-the-minute information. I'd like to thank all of you for joining us this afternoon, especially our go-to-meeting participants. Thank you so much. Your questions were to the point, and I'm hopeful that they were answered correctly, okay? And I'd certainly like to thank our three panelists. Robert Butchnick, thank you so much. Steve Parsons, thank you so much. And Annie McCary, thank you so much, okay? We really, really appreciate your efforts, and you've done a great job for Third. Thank you. And now I'll turn this back over to our President and Director, Steve Parsons.
Hi, thank you, David. On behalf of all the Third Mutual Board, I want to extend a heartfelt gratitude to all of our special guests and staff and to our community of owners for connecting with us this afternoon. Thank you for staying involved and engaged. I hope you all had a chance to get your concerns and questions answered, and like we said earlier, still send them in. We'll get back to you with answers. If you have an understanding of why we must vote yes, please help us sound the alarm to clean up the mess, the insurance mess and all the rest, and vote yes. This is a very critical vote. Here's a sample answer to the question. Why vote yes? Simply stated, it's money. That's the bottom line. And let me extend it a little further. It can affect your retirement plans, so be cognizant of that. If you like your money and want to keep more of it, vote yes. If you hate out-of-control assessments rising every time you turn around, vote yes. Thank you to all. Be on the lookout for more information online and on Channel 6 TV Village TV. Our next meeting will be a special forum that's scheduled for, it was today. It will also be one on October 9 at 11:30. So I believe that's this coming Friday at 11:30. We look forward to seeing you there via TV6 and streaming on Granicus. Thank you all once again. Wish you a good day, and the meeting is adjourned.